Get any tickets. So we decided to have our own fat salmon party. And so we had this party. And so on August 1st, we had this party. And of course, we had salmon as we did it. And also with the salmon, we had baked potato, pasta salad, and a watermelon. And then we
That makes me hungry.
Yeah, it was. So we had real great decorations. The tables were real nice because April is always great at that. And some centrepieces. They were real nice. And then when the people came in, they had some little veggie. And I told you, I told you, some of them just don't want that down. Tell them that you don't have a loss up there for about 2:30 for people wanting to go and talk to those. And we had a number of our board members serving there as help people get in and out. And also to help the people as they say, as they walk through the lines and find somebody to help. We had a great cook line. We had watermelon cut. We had chocolate cake even. That's good. And so the people had good stuff. So that part, a bunch of pictures. So but then we had the senior center last week, last month. Corey talked about the line dancing group. And so we had a group that the article itself said strapping your on your dancing shoes, how dancing helps. And then one of the interesting things to me, oh, come on. Was it, there's 87 year old Carol Perry is still dancing after 32 years. So she's a really dedicated person. But there's a lot of exercise and sociality going on in this thing. So now just let me see if I can. No, I don't have the sound. But this is the video that we prepared. So.
Ah, very nice.
Cute.
Someday I'll be able to dance like that.
I'll never dance like that.
Are you in there, Hal?
No, no, I'm not in there. I'm surprised the mayor didn't. He's okay.
I was there watching, but I didn't offer him.
No, they didn't offer for me to be in there. And then Corey talks a little bit. So anyway, that's part of the Well, I think then he talks after, then then Corey gets long-winded, you know, sometimes. But then I think they do a little more dancing after this. So this, the whole thing is about a minute. On the presentation now. So too bad you got the rest of your That's the rest of it. They're doing some more dancing. So but then This was a pretty good, we haven't heard anything back that I know of. As far as whether Keglin is gonna come on board with it or not. So but anyway, the That's my presentation, too bad you can't see it. Just imagine it. Thank you for having me to telling you about our great events at the center.
Thank you, Hal.
It's good to see you.
Just incidentally, we haven't heard back from Kelly Clarkston.
Right.
Her, she experienced a death in her family, their ex-husband. I've talked with the producer and we're not forgotten. It's just, they're just a little bit on hold. So we're hoping that they're gonna send a remote team out to Salt Lake City, Murray, and do a feature. So.
Thank you, Corey. Thank you, Hal.
Okay, our next discussion item is the power department fee changes for residential electric service upgrades. Greg Ballon presenting. You have 15 minutes.
A lot shorter than that. I can see a yes over here. I had a really good, I had a really good presentation as well.
Hi.
Hello.
This is our way to speed up the meeting. Just because everybody's powered on.
There's no PowerPoints, just keep rolling.
Thanks for letting us come and be with you tonight. So what we're doing is we're, we're just proposing some fees for residential upgrades. We've been inundated by residential upgrades. I don't know what's driving it. I don't know, some of that knocking doors. Not sure what's driving it, but we're, we get quite a few every week now. And so originally, what would happen if someone came in and said, I wanna go from a 100 amp service to a 200 amp service? Would look at it, see how it would affect. So you'd have to, once you look at that, you'd say, okay, what's the capacity of the transformer? Is this increased capacity going to overload a transformer? And if it did, that person that's upgrading at the moment would bear the cost of replacing the transformer. So we got together and we thought, let's, let's make this more equitable for everyone involved, us and the residents. And let's look at, so if someone comes in now, we're proposing for an overhead transformer. Say they come in, say get their application, permit whatever they're gonna get. And we look at it and we will give $435. And then, so what that does is that spreads the cost of that transformer. So maybe it might not be, this person might not need to upgrade it right now. But say the next neighbor comes along, needs to be upgraded. Now they would bear the cost of, on the old system, with the new system, just anybody that's upgrading on that transformer or just upgrading in general, is gonna pay $435 to just kind of pay their share of what it might cost eventually. So I think it's, I think it's very equitable, very fair, and it kind of spreads, that spreads the cost.
Why would you do that? Why would you wanna do that?
Well, so we might wanna An EV parked in the garage. You didn't say, they're setting me up for that question right there. Or a hot tub or they just, I know one person came and said, we, my insurance, they're selling the house and they couldn't sell it to the new individual. Their new individual wanted 200 amp service or at least 150 amp service for insurance purposes. I mean, that's a new one to me. I can't imagine that, but it's out there. And so that was, that was what was said to them. So it just got us thinking, and it's like, well, let's look at this. And we really liked the idea of, and what this, what else this will happen, this will do is it'll get into the E360 software that's at the building division. So it'll just be an automatic thing, they don't have to come and go through all the approvals right now that we're doing. I mean, we're doing a lot of approvals right now. That'll just be in the system and it can just be automated at that point. So it makes, I think that, I think it really makes sense. And then the other, that's the
So, let me understand this a little bit. So there's no timeline on when person two pays the 435. It could be 10 years down the road. So let's say it is 10 years down the road and we've increased the fee off of this. So now it's, say, $500. Do they pay $500 or are they paying 435?
Whatever the fee would be at the time.
Whatever the fee is at the time.
So if they got in, you know, we haven't, you know, say you paid 435, then they're, they're gonna 435 and we'll just increase that fee for anybody going forward. So.
Ask questions?
Yes.
What, I'm sorry.
He said yes. It's fine, break that.
Is it, you would obviously, if five years down the road it was more expensive, you'd come back to the council and say, that's not better.
Sure. Yeah. For sure. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, you're, hey, we're family.
You didn't delegate that authority to me.
It's all good. It's all good. I do have a question on number four. It says sale for resale shall not be allowed under this schedule. What does sale for resale shall not be allowed? What does that mean, number four?
It has special conditions, E4.
On the 15.20.1.2.
That's what I've got. Oh, I forgot to introduce, so I've got
Oh.
Can I sit up here, you two? I've got Eric Bracewell. He's our operations manager and Chris Neiman, our engineering manager. So this is Eric. Chris Neiman, so.
Is Chris the new one?
Yes. New us.
New us, yes.
New us to the city and new us to the position.
Yes, that's right. And he's with engineering, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So they're gonna take this question for me.
Oh, okay. So it says sale for resale
So that's
Shall not be allowed under this schedule.
So that's typically like, so the mobile home park.
Okay.
If it's primary meter, there's one meter.
Yes.
They, they can't add, resell that power at a profit.
Yeah, at a higher rate than what they charge.
Oh.
So they make money on it, right?
They can't take power from us and resell at a higher rate to their customers.
That's cool.
Okay.
So not resell, basically, yeah.
You're not taking that and then charging them what, making, making a profit on it.
Okay.
There is mud.
Yeah.
Well, it's because it's a sole provider for that, right? So
Yeah, we're the power company. You don't want someone else acting like it's a power company.
Yeah, they're gatekeeping power.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. And so say for instance, I, I buy this
You wanna upgrade your service?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then I sell the house.
Yes.
Do the people that buy my house, do they have to pay anything? Or do they just take what we have put into the house? And they just get all the benefits that we have?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Just add 435.
I'll put 435 on top of the house.
The solar that's on your home, all that stuff just kind of goes with it.
Okay. I didn't know if they had to come to you and say, listen, we bought this house. We have to pay for this.
No, and this will be, this will be kept track of per, per home.
Okay.
Right, that fee goes to whoever's paid it. So that house is now paid. So we'll have a, we'll have a nice little spreadsheet that keeps track of everything that's been paid.
Okay.
And once you've gone up to 200 amps, you can't go any higher unless you go to a different class. So if you already have 200 amps, you wouldn't have to worry about upgrading it anymore, so.
Yeah.
What's about being Scotty and maybe more power?
Yes, and if you need to go to a higher, like 320 amp or above, then you're gonna be at commercial rate.
Okay.
So that, that increases, well, a lot of those times, people have their own transformers at that point anyway. That they're done with that big of a home. And then the other section was, we're just taking, just updating line extensions.
Yep.
And I'll just help explain it to Corey later if you have any questions. But in the past, there were some things that were rebated. But I think that, I think back in the day, they were trying to encourage, you know, people to come in and develop, but we don't, we don't need that in there now. They, they need to bear the full cost of whatever they're developing at this point, so.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Yep.
All righty.
Do we have any other questions, council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
See you in a week. I got your Star Trek preference, by the way.
You heard you giggle.
Thanks. Okay, all right, our next discussion, how are we doing on time, Jennifer? Okay, here we go. Discussion on an ordinance in any section 17.24.050, 17.96.030, 17.100.030, 17.120.030, 17.124.030, and 17.128.030 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to the maximum number of children permitted at a license in home daycare.
Hello.
Hello.
So, what's that?
I just have a question. I know this person.
Okay.
Is it okay that?
I think just, I, I think you just have to state it on record.
I mean, what capacity do you know? Is it a relative?
Yeah.
A friend, a friend and neighborhood? So I, I know the person. So I just wanted to let you know.
Just so the record knows it.
Yes.
Yep. Um, I'm just gonna start very quickly and then I'm gonna turn it over to David because he wrote most of the code here. But if you guys remember earlier this year, we came to you about a request for an increase to childcare. And at that time, the council said that they'd be willing to kind of have the discussion. So we are now here to have the discussion. So I'm gonna turn it over to David to kind of go over the changes in the code.
Thank you so much, council. It's nice to see you and be here with you all. So we got a request from a resident who operates an at-home daycare and had other at-home daycares also sign that they wanted to do this as well. To raise the number of kids from 12 to 16 located within an at-home daycare. This comes after the state of Utah in November of 2023 also raised that threshold. So we would be raising it to match what the state allows us to do. So Zach tasked me with looking at several different city codes, different ordinances around the valley to see what other cities do. And I came up with this language that is before you guys. So we, we are allowing to go from 12 to 16 if certain conditions are met. And we have outlined eight conditions that we believe allow more children to be had safely in the home and that allow a daycare to operate the way that, you know, they're intended to, to provide more childcare opportunities for residents within the city and to allow local businesses to be able to operate in a way that they can do so safely and fulfill a need in the community. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any about the language that was drafted. Most of it, just like I said, came from other ordinances around and we kind of tweaked it and adapted to do what we think would work here and there.
Are there any other cities around us that don't do this state?
So most of the surrounding cities have not raised it to 16. We would be one of the first if we do.
Why, this just, I don't think it's a good idea because when you go from 12, that's increasing for, and you have two staff members. I mean, that just seems like a lot. And I know they're concerned about their bottom line, that's what I kept reading. But I'm concerned about the safety of the children. So that really, that's why I keep thinking, that's a lot of kids for
And I would say, so the state of Utah does dictate a minimum square footage requirement per, per child. So that, so by the city allow, potentially allowing this does not negate them from getting the, the required state and county permits that are required to be licensed as a childcare facility.
Is that where that's determined? The state determines the square footage?
Yeah, they, they have a minimum. I think it's 35 square feet per child that have to be, that have to be allowed. And so what, what happens and what we've seen happen consistently is that the state will say, you have enough for 16. And then they'll apply for 16 and we're like, no, 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 Murray only allows 12. And so there's this, this confusion, you know, this just disconnecting. There's usually, you know, some sort of bickering going on about, well, we can be more strict than the state. And even though they allow it. And so it, it's just a, it's a weird
Yeah, so even though we're allowing that many, it doesn't mean that they could technically have that many.
Correct.
Yeah.
Cool.
Without, right, yeah.
But they probably will because that's gonna make more money for them.
They won't, they won't have the proper square footage.
They would have to be
Okay, so the person who's requesting this, does she have the proper square footage?
She does.
Because she already has the number of kids in her daycare.
Yes.
Without our having approved it.
So she's still licensed to the state to have the 16. And so there's the disconnect.
Does that overreach the city?
No. So yeah, that's, that's, she shouldn't be having that currently.
So that's why she's not following the success. Do something specifically regarding your business offices. Currently, there's nothing that says whether the kids are the parents' kids, like the provider have their own kids or not. And specifically, we said that their children, so the provider's children count towards the 16. That's good. That's something that's, that's a good, yeah. That's a good, yeah. That's good. That's a big, it's, this is somebody who's trying to abide by the law. So they're trying to Yeah, right, like this is kinda
There's a degree where we're, we might be leveling the playing field a little bit for those who are trying to do it right.
Yeah.
If we allow this to go through.
Yeah. And I am encouraged, you know, the notices were sent out with no response. And I mean, that's, I mean, that speaks well of her, that she hasn't let it get out of control. So that's, that's awesome.
But she also has these positions that have been signed.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That, and these are, some of these people are I know, so.
You're going, wow.
If I'm reading it correctly, they can have up to eight sessions per week. And up to 16 children per session.
That's correct.
So one address could see the coming and going of 122 children a week.
At the maximum.
At the maximum. I always look at things at the extreme.
Sure.
Because if we're allowing it, that's we need to look at it. So I'm thinking
That's not 122 unique children. It's not our
No, they're not unique children.
Right, okay.
No, they're just 122 people, students total, right?
Yeah.
Can, can I see what you're looking at real quick when you mention that? Because that might be for something different.
Conditional uses. It's only, only which of these seven are no more than 16 children. We review it at any given time. Be no more than eight sessions per week. Any session will be, last longer than three hours. So I take eight times 16.
Always not gonna go through that paper.
I'm not letting on my paper.
I'm just a little concerned if, if I'm living across the street from that and I have 122 kids during the week, dropped off and picked up. There's a drop off and a pickup, which makes it, you know, I don't know, I'm, I'm concerned about the congestion. My street is a narrow street.
This street isn't.
I'm, I'm not saying this case is particular, right?
We have to consider the narrow street too.
Yeah, we have to consider all the streets because we're allowing it, Murray, we're allowing in every street. Narrow streets, wide streets. So I'm just concerned at 122-ish kids in and out, potentially, of a neighborhood.
Is that the preschool standard?
It is the preschool standard. That's what I'm checking. Like, why is the preschool standard?
Is that, is that, that was my other question.
It's, yeah.
Yeah. Right, so
Yeah, and this is a daycare.
Preschool and daycare are, they are separate. They're considered separate in our code. Okay. So this is, this is a clarification app because when we had the first meeting, we lumped preschool and daycare together. But your, but your comments to the planning commission separated.
They are separated.
We are separated.
So, um, we'll get it, we'll get it corrected. So that is what's in the written ordinance. We'll get it corrected in the ordinance. Because in the text, so if you go to the packet, for example.
Yes, we're here.
Yeah, but if you go to the packet and it says in the, so if you look at the redlined request for changes, it's 6815 residential childcare facility in single-family dwellings only with no more than 16 children other than those residing in the dwelling.
Yeah, that was the, what changes we need to get into first.
Yeah, so there, there looks like there's, there was an error in the ordinance. We'll get that. Drafting of the ordinance, which we can get corrected before, before the meeting.
Number six to preschool.
Yeah. Can you just give me that number in that box right there?
6815.
Okay.
Use number 6815, is that what you need?
Yes, but we do have it separated in our code where it says residential childcare facility and then one says preschool. So we'll need to clean that up a little bit.
Okay.
Yep. But it should not be preschool. Because preschool is different because those are sessions.
Yeah.
Where daycare, thank you. Daycare is largely day. Yeah, it's like an all-day thing, right? Yeah, it should not be the sessions. When you started saying that, I'm like, this doesn't make sense. That doesn't sound like what we wrote. So yeah, we can, we can get that corrected.
And they take babies up to four years old, five years old, right?
Yeah.
For daycare, it's like
Yeah, I think daycare, it can go up to 12 years old, I believe.
Yes, it can go up to 12 years old.
Oh, that's
So a daycare would be up to 16 in a day total. So it times five days a week, you know, however many it comes.
Exactly. Whatever their hours look like, right? Yeah. Based on the day.
So, so let me just do my math. They can really slow up maths.
That's okay.
Especially when the spotlight's shining on me.
Yeah.
Yeah. So 16 times five days a week.
Okay.
We're looking at 80 kids.
Trips?
Potentially, if they're single, you know, maybe they're dropping two kids, so they'll just zip by some.
Right, exactly.
So we're looking at over, over 50 trips. Let's just say that.
Yeah.
Okay? That is a little bit concerning.
I can understand that. I, it, you have to take a look at the 12 currently, right? So 12 times 50, or five is 60, right? So it's adding 20?
It's just adding to what already we have.
Right, and, and you also have to take into consideration that obviously not everybody is going to run a residential daycare. I don't want to.
Yeah, yeah.
I definitely don't.
And hats off, they're needed, right? They're needed. And the last thing I wanna do is get in the middle of this because they're needed.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's just one of the things you have to kind of balance, right?
Yeah.
So it's going from 60 to 20 and these are probably smaller. There, there's so many other regulations that they have to meet in order to do it. I think at least looking at the, the conversation there, I've lost my train of thought, it's gone.
All right.
So I, I think it's worth, you know, having or allowing this up to 16 in these instances because it's, I, I just don't think it's going to have a, a large enough negative impact to most neighborhoods.
From what we already have, right? So from 60 to 80 total.
Right. I mean, and that's a, a, an extreme case, right?
Yeah, yeah, of course. I, I just wanted to get that point out there. I, I, I want our, our people who represent to know that we are thinking about this, discussing this, and this is still in our mind. If they have comments on that, contact us and let us know if that's an issue.
Yeah, for sure. Definitely.
So the state requirement, I'm reading her letter. You, a little square footage, 35 square feet per child that's in there. So they only be 500 square feet roughly to, for 16 children, 560?
Yeah, 560 square feet.
So how do they Yeah, like, how's that classified? Help me understand what the state requirement is.
I, I think there's some, I don't interpret the state
A bedroom doesn't count, I'm assuming? It has to be like the open living space in the house, like if it's an in-house? I guess if they're not
I think there's multiple, there's multiple iterations of this. Okay, it says Oh.
And if, if we need to, we can
We can always come back to this.
Go to the state website and come back, you have that information.
Yeah.
And, and here's where I'm going at, is I'm just wondering about RM zones. Like, what's, if we allow this, with what you're saying with the traffic, those are our narrower streets in our RM zones. Like, what's that gonna do to an RM zone if we allow this to be 16?
Sure. And, and I think, I think it might be good to come back at the next committee of the whole and we can give you some more information. Because I have, you know, there's, like, this would probably be helpful, showing you that there's actually an age breakout. Like, you have a certain number of infants, you can only have a certain number of this, things of that nature. So I think if, if you guys are fine with it, I would probably like to just bring this back. We can delay
Yeah, let's have a continuance of this one.
Oh, yeah, we have more than one time. You have to go and pack this up for that.
I can get it this week.
We'll prioritize it.
I mean, they've already got it, but we'll just update it and stuff, so yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.[1718.01]
Do a little quick thing before we hop down. I know we're out of time here.
You're actually not. You're, you're gonna time for your items.
So, we were able to pull up the code and find the land use number. And most of the time in our code, a number and a land and a use correlate, there's just one use for that number. But we were able to find here that interestingly, sixty-eight fifteen has two land, it has two uses next to it, which is unusual in our code. And it does split out residential daycare and group instruction. It's two separate uses, even though they strangely have the same number. That's pretty unique in the code.
So, we just have to clean up the ordinance a little bit. So, we'll get that.
Let's continue this conversation.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Next one is discussion on text amendment to code enforcement. Chad Wilkinson presenting thirty minutes.
Thank you very much. I, uh, it should be in your packet, but I brought some extra copies in case we need that. Well, without the overhead, I'll just kind of refer to those slides you've got in the packet. I just want to, this is gonna be, yeah, I think, um, this is gonna be the beginning of a process that's gonna take us several meetings to get through. And that's a major overhaul of our existing code enforcement program. Today is kind of the, the basic building blocks. We're gonna talk about basic building blocks. In those subsequent weeks, we're gonna come back with the actual ordinance language for you to take a look at. There's gonna be a lot of details in that ordinance to make these building blocks happen, right? There, there's a lot of things that have to be adopted to make these basic building blocks work. But I want to go through the basic building blocks. And in that being said, there's, there's two guiding principles that, at least for me, as I've been going through this process and looking at various ordinances from other cities that, that guide me. One is this. Number one, this is what the first building official that I worked with up in Grants Pass, Oregon would say to me, and it's, it's, uh, over the last twenty-five years, I've come to see that this is true. He said to me that lack of enforcement breeds enmity. Now, I, to put that a little bit, those are some five-dollar words, but his, you could say, lack of enforcement creates resentment, right? So, and that happens with people that are flaunting the code, that happens with people that, that want the code to be enforced. Uh, you know, it's just good citizens that see that the codes aren't being enforced. It breeds resentment. So, it's important that if we're going to adopt a law, that we enforce that law. Um, if we decide we're not going to adopt a law, that's fine. We can, we can choose that. But if we have a law, it's important that we enforce that, or otherwise, we're going to create resentment in our community. So, number two, and this is the biggest guiding principle for me, and I've seen that this is the most effective code enforcement tool, and that is voluntary compliance. And so, nothing that we're going to talk about tonight is going to, um, change our approach the most effective way. And actually, if you look at the, the numbers that we get, um, with our code enforcement, that's mostly what we get. Most people, when you let them know that there's a code violation, they'll voluntarily comply. They may ask for some additional time. They may say, hey, I've got this circumstance, this circumstance that prevents me from doing it as quickly as you'd like, but I can get it done. So, we try to work with that because voluntary compliance is always the best method. If you can have someone that's willing to work with us, we want to help them. So, you know, our staff now works to that end. We always try to get that first. But occasionally, we don't get that. Occasionally, there's, voluntary compliance doesn't happen. And so, we have to have a program in place that allows us to, um, follow up on those things when you don't have voluntary compliance. So, we're just gonna talk briefly about what we do right now. Uh, we have now a system that's in place. We have notices that go out to property owners. The first notice that people receive is, I guess you could call it kind of a warning notice. It's a fourteen-day notice, a first notice, where we identify the digital code violation. Could be a variety of things, um, could be zoning issues, could be other issues. So, we, and, and this does not include weeds. I'll get into that in just a minute. But let's say someone has a shed that they built too close to the property line or without a building permit. We give them fourteen days to rectify that situation. If we don't have any kind of response from them in those two weeks, we come back and give them a, a second and final notice that says that you need to comply within another fourteen days, at least fourteen days. We can, we can give them more time if they're working with us, but at least fourteen days, uh, to try to again, uh, fix that situation. In that case, if they don't comply at that point, the next step in the, in the process is to forward these, uh, code complaints, code violations to our city attorney's office uh, for prosecution through the legal system. So, uh, there are a couple of things that, as I talked to our existing code enforcement officer, he wanted me to make sure that I, that I pointed out to you. Um, we also work very closely with the complainants, right? So, the people that actually file the complaint, we make sure we try to follow up with them so they know that there's action being taken. Uh, sometimes it moves much slower than they would like. Um, and we're hoping to address some of that through this new, uh, code enforcement process. But we do, we do, um, reach out to those complainants as well as the people that we're working with. In addition, um, you know, we, not only do we do notices, but there is personal service that happens. And if we don't get, uh, good response from those mailed notices, but people in person. And we say, hey, we've got a problem here that we need to try to fix. Can you please help us, uh, get that problem fixed? So, we do those in-person visits. Uh, that is kind of the, the normal process. I want to just point out weeds are a little bit different. Weed, we actually have some code authority right now to lean properties, which gives us the ability to handle that a little bit differently. So, with weeds, people are given one fifteen-day notice. If no action is taken in that fifteen days, um, then we have a contracted weed abatement specialist. It's a landscape guy that comes in and chops down weeds. We can then charge that, uh, property owner for that service. If they don't pay that, uh, weed bill within thirty days, uh, then we go, the lean's placed on the property, goes into their, their tax bill for the year, and they pay that with their taxes. So, that's kind of existing process. Now, what's, what are some of the issues with that? If you look at the next page, disadvantages with the current system. First of all, there's really no good mechanism for immediate citations. This is always funny to me. Some of these things, for example, let's say someone had a, a vehicle parked on their lawn. And, and we write them a notice and say, hey, we don't park vehicles on lawns in northern cities. We have some standards that restrict that. Uh, they, they don't comply at the time. We go through a process to keep that vehicle parked on the lawn. We have to go through a legal process to try to get that rectified. By the time we get to the courts, sometimes that's already been rectified. The judge looks at that and says, well, are they doing it now? No? Okay, well, took care of it, right? So, so that, that's where that process can fall short. There's not really a good process for something that's immediate, that we can get immediate action, um, an immediate, uh, penalty or whatever in place. I talked about this a little bit, but the court process can take months or even years to complete. And so, it's, it's not sometimes ideal for some of these quick turnaround code enforcement issues, right? And I also think of things like weeds or snow removal. If we have to go through the court system, you can imagine if we end up at court in June for a snow removal complaint, that's gonna be a tough thing for us to talk about at that time of year, right? So, it, uh, it, that's another, I guess, shortcoming with the current system. And then consistency. When we send a land use matter or a zoning issue or some other code enforcement issue to a judge, we may get a judge that's not familiar with those types of issues. And so, in a lot of cases, they do the very best they can, but it's hard for them to understand the importance of some of these laws. So, we sometimes get inconsistent decisions. We're at their mercy, um, to make a decision. Uh, it's, it's Solomon, um, routine sometimes, splitting the baby. They try to make both parties happy, city and the applicant, and that usually results in neither of those parties being, being happy if it has to go to that level. So, gee, there you go. You're right there. You're right again. So, that's, that's another thing that I want to highlight is there's some things that we want to say that get everything fixed. Now, as we go through the code enforcement systems throughout the, uh, many communities, I took my students, uh, it's called the administrative code enforcement program. Uh, I think we've looked at several cities around the valley, uh, predominantly, this is the, the system that, that people use now. So, as we go, to read the next page, this is the, the two, there's two tracks that we look at with the administrative code enforcement, uh, program. There are what I would call long-term issues that we have to try to resolve, and there's short-term issues. Uh, so, in this case, there would be two tracks that someone would, would receive, um, notices and would go through those various tracks. The first one is notice of violation. This is for ongoing or, or, or things that will take a while to resolve. So, that, that shed built without a permit is a good example of that. That's not something that someone can go out and say, you know, hit the deflate button and suddenly it's gone. It's gonna take some time for them to, to remove a shed that was built without a permit or to obtain the permit that they need for that shed if it's, if it's possible. So, in that case, that would be considered a notice of violation, something that takes a little while to resolve. And I'll go through some more of the distinctions there in a minute. An administrative citation would be something that could be issued at the moment. So, for things like parking a vehicle in an unapproved location, that can be something that a citation could be issued. It could be put right on the vehicle and, uh, at that point, the code enforcement is, is complete to a certain extent. I'll explain what that means. But they, they receive that citation, we've, um, identified the violation, given them their citation, and, uh, we move on. And, and that's something they can correct quickly. So, in the case of a vehicle parked in the wrong place, you move the vehicle. It's just like a parking ticket. If you get a parking ticket, the, the remedy for that is to pay your fine and to move your vehicle, right? That would be a similar thing with that administrative citation. So, I'm gonna dig a little bit deeper so this hopefully makes a little more sense. So, with a notice of violation or an administrative citation, in both cases, our proposal would be, you can still write to give a warning. We don't wanna, it's voluntary compliance. That's the overall goal, voluntary compliance. So, we would say, in either case, we, first thing that happened would be, we could, uh, warn either a courtesy notice or an administrative warning. After that administrative warning or courtesy notice is, is, uh, given, they'd be given a time to fix the problem, right? Whatever that time period is. For notices of violation, we'd want to give, you know, a good time period. Most codes do fourteen or fifteen days. So, in the example of a, a long-term problem, like a shed that needs to get a permit, uh, they might not be able to get that permit within fifteen days, but at least they can make the effort to show what, you know, what their plan is for compliance. Come to the city and say, this is how I'd plan to comply. We could work with them and say, yeah, we, we, we can live with that or else we, we need to go through the process, an additional step or whatever that case may be. With an administrative warning, for example, on a parking issue, would be a warning. It would be a time to rectify, and that would be the only warning that they would get. And the next time, it would be a citation. So, they would receive, uh, essentially, when we say citation, we're talking about a ticket, right? That's, that's what we're talking about. In that case, it's a one-time fine. We say, you have, um, it's a violation of the code. We warned you that this was gonna, that this could happen. You're gonna get a violation or a, excuse me, administrative citation. That's gonna come with a fine. That fine doesn't accrue. It's a one-time, uh, citation fine. Uh, they'd come just like a parking ticket. You'd come in and pay that and resolve it that way. Um, and I'm gonna get into the, the rest, the, the hearing process in just a minute. That would be an administrative citation. With a notice of violation, they'd have the fifteen days to resolve it before an actual notice of violation comes. At that point, we would have the time period, like I said, we would propose no less than fourteen days to resolve. During that fourteen-day time period, most of these codes give the, the folks a chance to appeal. So, in the case of a shed that's been built without a permit, the person could come in and appeal and say, well, I have this extenuating circumstance. Or let's say the shed's too close to a property line. They could say, well, uh, we, you know, we have this thing that we think justifies a variance. That's why we built this too close to a property line. Whatever the case may be, they can come in and request an appeal during that fourteen-day period. Um, so that comes to our next step. Where, where does that appeal go? Well, the next part of this administrative code enforcement program is that we would appoint an administrative law judge. Um, most cities use, uh, attorneys, uh, although that, it doesn't necessarily have to be an attorney. But, uh, this would be someone that has experience with land use or zoning or code issues, municipal code issues, that could make, uh, decisions. They would be, uh, just like it says, a judge in those cases. Uh, we can set the schedule. So, unlike the regular court system, we can, we can have regular hearings where these appeals can be heard, where these, um, folks come in and make their case, and, uh, those can be set at our timeframe. We typically see that those are anywhere from forty-five to sixty days out for people to come in and do that. So, it's much shorter. I know that sounds like a long time, but it's much shorter than the court process would be for that same type of a hearing. That hearings officer is authorized to, uh, look at fines and look at appeals and make decisions related, related to those based on our codes and based on good jurisprudence, just like we would with a judge. But they, they would go through that and, and look at that and, and make sure that we're, we're, we're looking at all the issues and, and give people their due process, which is the other important part of this. One difference between a notice of a violation and administrative citation also is if we get to a point where they have not requested a hearing, they haven't fixed the issue, they haven't even come in to talk to us, those fines, unlike the administrative citation, accrue. So, we would come up with a fee that you would adopt to counsel. I'm just gonna throw it around, number fifty dollars a day. Let's just say that's what it is. And that fee, that fee would accrue for every day that that item stayed in violation. They didn't address it. So, that's the difference between these two is a little more time for the notice of violation without giving them a fine. But if we get to a point after a month of, of working with folks, that they haven't made any effort to comply, then those, those fines begin to accrue on a daily, daily basis. Okay, other things that are included in this, you'll see on that, uh, slide, that page five slide is, is that there is, during that administrative law judge, um, process, if we find that no one is, that someone's not making an effort to comply, we have abatement provisions, which means that the city is authorized to go out and fix the problem and take appropriate action to do that and then, um, adopt again fines that would, uh, help to pay for that abatement. There's a lot more to that abatement process that we'll go into in the coming weeks. There's also an emergency abatement provision in most codes. If we have something that's a, a threat to public health, for example, fire hazard, something else where we can go in and abate and then hold the hearings after. Okay, so here's the advantages. That next slide that shows the advantages. We, quick turnaround on those one-time or easy-resolved violations. It's not a matter of weeks or months. We just give a citation. They correct the problem, they pay the fine, we move on. If, again, quick turnaround for a request for appeals and administrative hearings. Instead of months, we're at weeks. Um, it allows us to have a consistent process for each of these different violations. Uh, they'll, we'll have a code that says this is the process you go through. It allows us to adopt consistent fines and penalties. Again, if we go through the regular court system now, as we would do with a criminal or a, a civil court proceeding right now, it's, it's hard for us to say what that fine's gonna be, whether a judge is going to, um, impose a fine, whatever that, whatever the case may be. It could be, maybe not. This would give us consistency in that. Uh, greater transparency of the public. We're gonna have this process right on our website. Many of the cities will put something like, I just received an administrative citation, what now? Kind of a, uh, something on their, their website so that our community can know exactly what happens. It also applies to those that are complainants. They can see what the next steps in the process. So, someone who, who has filed a complaint can say, okay, I can see that this is the next step they're gonna go through to resolve this process or revolve this, this problem, excuse me. Um, and then, yeah, the most important thing to me, again, that very last point, this does not take our ability away to work with people. And that's the most important thing, is voluntary compliance. If we have someone that after that fourteen-day warning period comes and says, I got your notice. Look, I've, I've had this extenuating circumstances happen. I have full, I'm gonna comply. I just, you know, I, I was, uh, in active duty in the military, couldn't get it done. Whatever that case may be. We can, we can still work with them through this process. But it gives us some very, very, um, consistent and, um, easy for people to understand process if that doesn't happen. Okay, so, next steps. This is probably the part that I want to take a little bit of time on. It's just one, one slide that involves a lot of things. So, the first thing that we need to do in order to
Which slide is that?
Is the very last one.
We don't have
Oh, you don't have that one?
No.
Would you like it?
Oh, yeah.
No.
What happened there?
Our last page didn't make it.
There you go. I'm glad I brought these.
I got nothing.
Get that yours.
So, the things that have to happen for this to happen, first of all, is this code. Uh, GL and I have been working together on reviewing the various codes from different cities, comparing. Uh, like I said, there's a lot of cities that have similar programs. Each of them have their own, uh, unique twist to the, the implementation of this. Uh, we've, we've seen some that we think are, are better for Murray's situation, some that we think would be, uh, what we'd recommend. But because of that, it's taking time for us to, uh, compile that and to do some cross, um, comparisons of those various ordinances. So, what we'll be doing in the subsequent weeks, hopefully, uh, very soon, um, I would hopefully have that, another committee of the whole meeting to review that code, either, uh, September sixteenth or the first meeting in October that we could review that code. Most likely, that first week in October. But what we do is go through that code with you, let you see what those, that, that code would implement what we just talked about. Another big step would be for us to select and appoint an administrative law judge. So, the communities that have done this in the past have, uh, put out requests or proposals. There are folks that, uh, do these regularly, that are, that are, they work as administrative law judge. This is usually a contract position. Uh, it's a paid position with, with the cities that they do this for. And they do this for a certain, uh, number of hearings per year, and, uh, their, so their time is paid for in that way. Um, this, again, it doesn't have to be an attorney, but that often is what cities use to do this process because they have that experience with the law and the way that should be implemented. Uh, we've, we've had a couple of recommendations on folks that are doing that for other cities, but I would suggest we'd want to put it out there and just see, uh, with that request or proposal process, who responds and, and see if we can get the, the best administrative law judge as we can. And the other big one, this is a big one for you all, and that is the fines. So, right now, as we're doing our code enforcement, um, we don't really talk too much about fines in, in these letters and citations, right? We, we let them know that this is a violation, that it could proceed to court. That's certainly a part of our current process. We let them know that if, that the, the consequence of not complying is that it could possibly be forwarded for legal action. But we don't know exactly what that legal action would be. We don't know exactly what, if, if a judge would impose a fine, what that fine would be. So, one of the important things that council's gonna have to do is consider appropriate fines. Um, different cities have different amounts for administrative fines, for those daily, um, violation fines. So, we want to try to come up with something that would work, that would, of course, again, our goal is voluntary compliance. Sometimes, though, we have to give a little push. We'd want to make it something that was, uh, at least not to, to help people to feel that they need to take these things seriously, right? So, so that's gonna be the balance that, that we'll bring back to you. So, this, again, this discussion was meant to be to lay the groundwork for more discussions in the future. Just to let you know, uh, in, in anticipation of, of some of these reorganizations we have, uh, began the process of hiring some code enforcement officers. We've got a code enforcement officer that, uh, an additional one. Mark has been kind of manning the fork for about the, the last several months. So, we've got an additional code enforcement officer starting on, on, um, Tuesday, uh, September second. And that, uh, that individual knows that we will, we'll be doing, um, a transition to a new system, and they're very excited about that. In the meantime, we'll, we'll continue with our current system. They'll be taught our current system and, and we'll move on that way. We'll also be hiring as part of this a code enforcement supervisor that would be, that'll come in the, in next several weeks. And their responsibility would not only be day-to-day code enforcement And their responsibility would not only be day-to-day code enforcement, but predominantly coordinating with the administrative law judge, setting up hearing dates, processing appeals, taking care of fines, keeping track of fines, those kind of things. The administrative side of that, as well as doing their own code enforcement, active code enforcement. So, with that, I've talked for a few minutes, what questions do you have?
What, what city or cities are you looking at to kind of?
Yeah, so, the one that's, the city that's been doing this the longest in the state is, is West Valley.
Sure.
They, they've had the SimOne program for this for a long time. West Jordan is one we've had a lot of communications with, because they're a sister community to us, just neighboring to us. Looked at Midvale, Holiday, was that one of those, GL? Midvale, Holiday, so like I said, the, West Valley, yes, Bluffdale is, is one of the ordinances we use as the basis of our text because it was fairly straightforward, but we didn't, we didn't like the way they did everything, and they had some differences the way they did things besides, or when compared to West Jordan, so we've made some tweaks there. So, so we've tried to pick the best of each of these codes that we think would work for Murray. Like, it's not a finished product yet, that's why we don't have it before you yet, but it will come soon, but those are the communities.
So what's the fiscal note on it?
Yeah, so we have budget right now for the code enforcement positions. We, the current system we've had for many years was split between the community development department and the police department. So we had in your budget that you approved, those two officers already budgeted for. So, the, the portion that we will need to get a handle on, that I don't have a good answer for you, is the administrative law judge costs. We need to do some additional looking into that, there will be a budgetary impact. Now, keep in mind, there'll also be fines collected through this process, that will help to offset some of those costs, but that's not our goal. And we, the, the purpose of this is not to collect fines, that's why I say, anything that we've looked at, any of these code, code amendments, the overarching principle is voluntary compliance, that's what we want. We, we don't necessarily want to collect fees, but that will, that will somewhat offset, if we, if we have fines that are collected, the cost for that administrative law judge, but there will be some costs there, certainly. And we'll, we'll, as we come back with the ordinances, we'll have a better handle on that for you.
Well, I'm really glad you're doing this, I mean, it's really, we needed it for quite a while.
And the residents are really hesitant in signing their name on that piece of paper. And so that's why they come to us, to me, because they're afraid that those people around them will find out that they're a neighbor or, so.
So we, right now, we don't, we don't let people know who the complainant was, we know that's not our current process, we'll continue to not give out that information.
Because in the past, I was told that if they asked, they were given that information.
Only, only a judge tells us that we have to.
Okay, thank you.
We don't just give it out.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, well, I appreciate it, I'm really glad you're doing that.
Yeah.
Any other questions about what we've gone through? Okay, got your back on schedule?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, our last discussion item is on a resolution approving an inter-local corporation agreement between the city and the Murray City School District for Murray City Firefighter to teach firefighters, to teach fire education classes offered by the school district, Joey Middleman, who's in T10 minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, council, thanks for letting us bring this program to you guys, and.
Thank you for yesterday.
Yeah, it was amazing. Thank you guys for supporting our fire safety, oh, sorry, I just said fire safety, police, public safety fair. Listen, I got a, I got a few things on my mind right now, it's turning in the background, a few things that we will, but anyhow. The Murray High School came to us, they actually came to me years ago and talked about a fire safety program. And we always kind of struggled trying to find the right style for it. And we started up an EMT program, not we as a city, but just we as fire employees. And we were able to run that through private organizations, which is always great when it runs through that.